See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe.
You're out.
Board of selection. We're to the point where you can have approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Always in favor? I'm really not prepared to give selectmen's comments. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things that could go with comments as well as anything else. I'd like to ask, on behalf of the rest of members of the board, that Adam, we're going to appoint a new member of the planning board coming up. And I can ask Adam to find when and schedule an MMA Planning Board workshop sooner rather than later, take place either in Augusta, Lewiston, or Foilin. Preferably Lewiston because the Ramada inputs on health spread. But, and that we should encourage probably all the members of the planning board to use it too now. I don't, I can't remember the last time anybody's been to any of that training. And the other thing is, on Thursday, the 28th coming up this week, it's round two of the Board of Assessment Review Hearing for the Cornelia Bean Property. And they're just hearing testimony from one real estate broker. And then they're gonna go to the vote. I can't make it that day. And if either one of you were interested in attending, I'll give you the files I've got on it. But quite frankly, there's no real role for us to play. That's ironic. And we're really there just for moral support sort of running. So if anybody wants to go ahead, great. If not, we'll just let the chairman of the DAR know that we won't be there as she is tentatively expecting us to be there.
To check the candidate?
Yep.
Any other comments? Any committee or department workgroup reports?
The unofficial energy committee met last week and requested the board do a tally on the data of how much energy, time is used in the school fire station at town office as far as oil, natural gas, and electricity. And in school's case, we'd like to stop when we took it back in House U1 as far as what they've used. Fight Department, like you say, since they changed to natural gas. And as far as the town office goes, since, was it five years ago the furnace you put in? The new furnace?
I think so.
From the time the new furnace followed. And once we have those numbers, we'll look at them and see if there's a common sense way to save money. And we might approach efficiency main or something to kind of evaluate that data that we receive. But if they wouldn't do that, we appreciate that.
No, it's a good idea.
Yeah. I don't think we need to make that official motion. We just go ahead and...
I would say Adam should do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, David and I already spoke briefly on the phone about it. So I mean, I think that that's a pretty easy thing for us to do.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I also found some information for you.
Other, any other information? Committee, department workgroups reporting? All right.
Do you think we have citizen comments?
Citizens, oh, citizens comments, thank you. I knew it this way.
That's okay.
Any further citizens comments? Hearing them. Shall we go to the first item on the agenda, the business agenda? This is the discussion of the Waterways and Harbor Committee. And the information that we have from the DMR and the municipal attorney. So Adam Garland and I had a telephone meeting with the town attorney on Friday afternoon. And with a particular interest in the suggestion from the committee about the use of the proposed Town of Chibig Advisory Questionnaire on aquaculture. And the upshot of the discussion is, we met with attorney Mark Bauer, who is one of our town attorneys. And he's very clear that the town does not have the authority to regulate or approve or disapprove of aquacultural leases. He read us chapter and verse of the state statutes. And the Department of Marine Resources Commissioner by statute has ultimate authority over everything on the water, including aquacultural lease approvals. And he, further reading our statute, no, excuse me, he's further reading in the state statute that the intention of the state is to have the harbor master serve as the official voice of the town. And that that is only in regard to navigation and not other aspects of lease application. And that beyond that, the harbor master's input into the lease process, including regarding navigation, is only advisory. And he emphasized that. That the commissioner is under no obligation to alter a lease approval or disapproval based on the information provided by the harbor master. Generally, it is done as a courtesy. And again, he stated that the town does not have approval authority. We can, as a town, if necessary, act as an intervenor. But the role of the intervenor is only that whatever information DMR is getting about the lease is passed on to the town. It doesn't mean that the town can say, "No, no, we don't like that one." And if it would be in the case of, we would act as intervenor in the case if there was an actual stated channel that had already been reported. And again, the commissioner isn't under any obligation to listen to that advice. And regarding channels, Attorney Bauer stated that the town has the authority to establish channels in town waters. But he did advise against establishing a channel in an area where an aquaculture lease is already in place. And he was very emphatic about doing so could create a liability for the town as the owner of the lease could claim damages due to the town's new channel displacing a business, thus causing a leaseholder financial hardship. He also spoke to conflicts of interest. Mr. Bauer felt that if the town board is attempting to influence a lease decision that is before the commissioner and members of the town board have a vested interest in the outcome, then the town would be creating a liability due to the perceived conflict of interest. So I think that that's the upshot of it. Adam, did you want to add anything more?
No, I think that captures it pretty clearly. I mean, the two pieces was the liability from conflict of interest and also the lack of the town's overall authority to do much when it comes to these aquaculture leases. So I think you hit it on the head.
I came away, quite frankly, listening to the town attorney. Really, the commissioner of the Department of Marine Resources has essentially assumed the authority of the colonial king of England when it comes to any place where water is over the land all the time. So the benefit of continuing colonial law is ours as well as the disadvantage of having colonial law continue. So that's the upshot of the meeting with the attorney.
And just for reference, Maine State Statute Title 38, Chapter 1, Maine Statute Title 12, Chapter 605, and Department of Marine Resources procedural rules, Chapter 2, are what the attorney has been referencing and we were referencing.
Right, right.
Madeline, you mentioned questionnaire from the Town of Chibig. What relevance does that have?
It was suggested at the meeting that that might be something that the harbor master might use as a guideline.
But it sounds like that would be wasted effort.
I'm not even sure it's legal.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand the relevance.
Yeah.
I... Your, here was an Adam's discussion with the attorney ties in. We've been on this topic since February. And we've all, we've read the DMR rules, we've read the statutes. We invited down the DMR to put on a workshop slash seminar. And now we've spoken to the attorney. And the message that we're seen to be taken from this is consistent all the way through, that the town has no business taking their nose in this. And the statutory, the only party even mentioned on the municipal side that plays a role in this, and that is advisory only, and that's the harbor master and the harbor master himself, not the harbor master's committee with the harbor master. And again, I reiterate that, and his role is purely advisory. And the commissioner of the DMR is not compelled in any way to take any input from the harbor master for her, unless he's over there. So I, in light of, especially the town's exposure to the liability, I would make a motion that we consider dissolution of this committee under the umbrella of the, as an arm of the town.
I would second that motion. Do you want the motion to be with the consideration of it or the cessation?
Oh, cessation. That we consider cessation, yeah. That the motion is a cessation, yeah.
The motion is to, is for the cessation of the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clarification. Is there further discussion?
Just wondering, do you have another committee putting in as far as the mooring aspect of it? For any future studies about the moorings?
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think that would be a separate discussion.
Well, I mean, as far as disbanding this committee, is there a thought going forward to reinstate a different committee along the lines of the moorings?
Well, yeah.
If I may, Peter.
Yeah.
I know that Madeline, as the chairman of the board, and I have discussed that need potentially. And if I'm correct, we discussed this maybe on the docket to have further discussion on either at the end of July or in August, on reassessing if there's a need or not for that.
Right. And one of the things that I'm concerned about going forward is that if there's a, if there's a need for a mooring plan for the whole town, would it be sensible to have areas demarked as potential mooring areas, mooring fields with channels, et cetera, et cetera? But I think that would be a different committee, and we would consider that down the line.
There is a provision in the comprehensive plan for a mooring field, which they reiterated, but it was, the plan was way out in the future. But the area set aside is off the burden, I think, is a big part of it.
Yeah. So there would be further discussion about the needs for mooring fields and so forth? Some further, I don't know, yes?
Just so that I can understand, I'm a new member of the Harbors, Waterways and Harbors Committee. So I never understood when I joined it that it was the LPA committee. I thought it was Harbors and Waterways. And I felt that the aquaculture leases were kind of a side issue that we were just more aware of as opposed to making any decisions. I don't recall that we ever made any decisions. But it's fine with me if you just be in the committee. I just joined it in the event that the selectmen needed any help on harbors and waterways. The oyster thing was always kind of sidelined. I know that myself as a frequent boater, and I boated a lot down in Maryland. And in Maryland, there are a lot of fishing whalers. And those fishing whalers, similar to the oyster crates, pose a huge risk to navigation at night. And what they do down there is they light them. As a sailboater, a sailboater is sailing to catch the wind, and the sailboater is not necessarily in a waterway. So of course, the sailboater is interested in any debris or any hazard that they might hit. Around here, the biggest hazard is rocks. But then when you run into, say, a oyster crates that you didn't know that were there in the nighttime, that could be a little sporty. So that was solely my interest. Nothing more than that.
Are we ready? Do we have a motion and a second?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Sure. May I interject? The Waters and Harbors Ordinance states, would your proposal do away with that ordinance? Would you just do away with the committee? So the ordinance states in paragraph one, purpose of this ordinance is to establish the Waterways and Harbors Ordinance Committee to provide for the just and orderly operation of marine activities in West Bath, on West Bath Waterways. Intended to promote safety enjoying unconvenience, effective use and control of mooring areas and public facilities permanent data. So by your vote, how would that affect this ordinance? Does that just, does that, I presume that would mean the ordinance will have to be revised? Are the two or three pages that ruled what the harbor master does?
We've been assured by the harbor master that he can carry out the spirit of the ordinance by himself, as he has been for several years without any assistance.
So will this ordinance go away?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. I'm just... What's that?
It would need to be rewritten, Adam.
Okay. So the ordinance would just be rewritten to take the committee, mention of the committee out of it?
I don't know if it has to be rewritten.
Maybe it could be one person? It has to be three.
Well, it says, in the ordinance right now, it says, the purpose is to establish the Waterways and Harbors Ordinance Committee.
We'd have to review it. I'm not sure the ordinance tells us we must have new. We have to look at it.
Yeah, okay.
I guess on the minds in a legal pattern, the ordinance has to be, if you're gonna change the ordinance, it's gotta be done by a town meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So depending how this is written, can you effect, do away with one part of it without doing away with the whole thing?
You mean amendment?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
That's what I mean, without going to town meeting. So I don't know if you can disband it tonight.
No, we're not, no, we're not disbanding the ordinance, just the committee.
But I mean, is it written such that the committee has to be there for the notice of enforce?
I would argue that it is up to the Board of Selectment on whether or not they want to appoint a committee. There may be an ordinance in place that says that this is to establish this. But it is up to their prerogative, the Board of Selectment, whether they want to appoint one.
I agree, I just...
I mean, I...
I'm just gonna clarify the fact that we don't...
I'm not clear with this ordinance, but I'm assuming it's the same as other ordinances. And I happen to know, for instance, the planning board ordinance. Now, the ordinance says that there needs to be a mechanism of which to oversee and planning zoning and all this stuff. It doesn't say, it says we may have a planning board. It doesn't say we should. Ultimately, the planning board is the selectmen ultimately.
Right. I'm just not sure...
I have a feeling it's the same way with this.
I'm just not sure myself how that's written. I know it's an ordinance, which is a town meeting function.
Yeah, yeah.
So the purpose of this ordinance is to establish the Waterway and Harbors Ordinance Committee, Ordinance Committee, to provide for the just and orderly operation of marine activities in West Bath Waters. When you look further in the ordinance, under section harbor master, section seven, it states maintain a mooring site plan. It goes on further to say about support, harbor master resources and support, a town board, doesn't specifically name said town board. Could one argue that the Waterways and Harbor Ordinance Committee is an ordinance committee that establishes ordinance? I don't know. I wasn't here when that happened. So I mean, we can cloud this up pretty quick if we want to.
It doesn't say anything in there about LPAs or oysters.
And the...
And that's the core. My concern is that the liability that this opens up, we have a committee that's supposed to be doing moorings and access to the water, chasing oysters and LPAs. When it's illegal. Clear?
I, my interpretation of what we're trying to do is not to deal with whether an LPA should exist at all, but where the LPA could be placed as it would relate to navigation in the waters in the town here.
Right.
And...
And we now have very clearly established from the, with the town attorney, that that is not something that is the purview of the committee.
Well, I understand that. But I'm, you know, I'm trying to distinguish from, you know, an LPA is something that somebody can apply for as opposed to it being placed so that interferes with navigation. And I see, you know, a difference there. No one else does.
From the way that, if I may, the way that the attorney described it to us on the phone, and I don't mean to sound like I'm making a joke, and I'm not, he basically said to us is that if the town, the municipal offices, the harbor master, whoever, says that this LPA lease application is going to be in the way of everything going on in the New Meadows River, that the commissioner of Department of Marine Resources could say, "Too bad. I'm approving it to go right there." And therefore, the town's ability to interject is quite small. I mean, it nonexists.
Well, I think with a, an experimental lease or a standard lease, that that would be very true, and I wouldn't disagree with you. But the town, they leave a lot more in practice to the town with an LPA than they do the other two types of lease.
They leave a lot more to the town?
Yes.
What do they leave to the town?
The town has more to say about an LPA than it does a... The town has very little to say about a standard lease. The town's people have two opportunities, as would anyone, of course, under the Board of Selectmen.
And on that point, the attorney did make that very, very clear, that the town's people have just as much opportunity to come to the table as individual citizens, those that are adversely affected or negatively affected, what have you. And that, quite frankly, correct me if I'm wrong, Madeline, if a town like yourself, if you wanted to go and have intervenor status with this process, then you as an individual could do that. And you really are gonna have just as much space at the table as the selectmen are gonna have.
Right. But I'm distinguishing between those leases and the LPAs, which leave more up to the harbor master and, you know, and the town.
But the harbor master's role is only advisory anyway, so he doesn't have any role either.
You know, I think in practice, if he disagreed with the location, that DMR would go along with that if he had a good reason. That's speculation, I suppose, on my part, but I think it would probably work that way.
We pursued four sources to try to understand this whole thing.
Yeah.
They're all in concert, and you're the only one who disagrees with what we...
Well, John Lewis, and I've been to, not only, which I was, I had a pretty bad cold, so I was missing a lot up here, at this one. But I've heard John Lewis address the same subject twice before. And in all those cases, he does distinguish between LPAs and the other leases and the town's ability to deal with that.
Right.
And secondly, you did say on the, that the attorney said that if the town were to establish a channel where someone was already at a lease, that would be understandable. But did he in fact address establishing a channel where in fact there are no leases at this point?
So my concern is the purpose of this Waterways Committee was to... It seems like we're getting away from what the purpose was. And I think this is where the issue in the rub comes. Because this says on here, "Is to establish the Waterways and Harbor Ordinance Committee to provide for the just and orderly operation of marine activities on West Bath Waterways." It feels like we're really getting into the oyster issue.
About what? I'm sorry.
It feels like we're getting really into the LPAs more than we are for what the purpose was here. And that's my concern.
Well, it's the location of the LPA that affects the channel.
And I understand that, but I...
Potential.
We don't have anything to say about it.
As individuals, you're more than welcome to pursue, you know...
Now, I'm talking about the harbor master in this case. He does have...
He does.
He does have...
But it's not optimum. If he can make all his recommendations, and in the end, it's the state who makes the final decision.
And then secondly, I'm saying that the town could, if it chose to, and I'm not even proposing that it do that, but it could establish a channel.
But not retroactively?
No, no, of course not.
Right.
But the harbor master...
Did you have something?
So if I was a member of the cemetery committee, for example, and we decided that...
You volunteer?
I'm not being very... And we decided that the salt shed, somehow we wanted something about the salt shed, which was not in our defined area of responsibility. And it was controlled by, that's controlled by the state. Say it's a state salt shed. We have no bit... It's not within our purview. Can you just tell the committee, "Okay, let it go"? You know, do we need to disestablish the committee? Do they serve no valuable? I mean, I could, I'm a voter, so I'm thinking, I don't know if they do any valuable. But is there a reason to disestablish the committee? Just tell them, "Stay the hell out of this. This is not what we've established you to do. This is a state function." And I'll get to the salt shed with my cemetery.
What you're saying makes a lot of sense. But we've been dancing around this... But, um, we've been dancing around this issue since February. And we've gotten absolutely nowhere. We're still right back where we were at in February, only we understand the issue a hell of a lot more than we did before. What we have is a committee who was established in two thousand and five, met two, perhaps three years, but never even met until it became, oysters became very, very popular. And then the committee, the committee that's charged with moorings, access to the water, and navigation, you know, management of channels, pops up and proposes that they want to oversee oyster application for these LPAs.
I understand.
And the town is facing a liability. Now, these individuals are more than welcome to continue their work, they just, the, we, the selectmen don't want to do under the umbrella of the town. And also, they will not enjoy the decree of immunity that's offered by being a town committee. So, when they get in legal trouble, they'll have to write their own checks.
And I understand that, so stay out of the oyster business. That committee has no business, it's not part of their tasking.
Over, over time, according to harbor master, uh, the committee will go through the motions of meeting, and then the discussion seems to devolve into oysters.
It's a non, it's a, it's not a discussable item. They're grownups, it seems to me they're grownups, and should be able to move forward.
One would think.
Or be removed from the committee. So, there.
Can I address your comment?
I'm, I'm missing something.
So, if I take, if I take my, take an LPA, and I draw it right across the channel at the, we'll say midway down Kings Point.
Right.
You don't think that would have anything to do with waterways or channels?
Oh, I, I do, but I've been told, I've been very clearly told by attorneys and the state that we do not go through a committee to resolve that. There are other ways to resolve that as citizens, not through the committee. So, I, I hear, I don't know, maybe it's low-level, but there's other ways to resolve.
A question has been called, um, so, uh, the, the board will now vote on the questions. All those in favor of the cessation of the committee as it stands right now? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Master.
Okay, so, now we have, um, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of, um, other committees.
Review of the appointments.
The review of the appointments. So, Peter, you were gonna hand that one, I, yeah?
You wanna be there, go over it.
Yes, please.
So, uh, business item number two, appoint to town committees, review and discussion. If you'll remember last, uh, the last selectmen's meeting, we discussed, um, our current roster, if you will, of committees and so forth. Uh, just a couple notable changes that I just wanted to make the board aware of. On the board of assessment review, the bar, Rob Morris, who's been with the bar for quite some time, is resigning his position, he does not wish to be reappointed. Uh, for no other reason than he's just, he's been doing it quite a while, and he's had enough. But he thanks the selectmen for letting him be on the committee. Uh, budget advisory committee, Paula Nelson, she has moved out of town and is no longer eligible to be on the committee. The, let's see, marine resources Angela Bryant, am I saying that right? Is requested that she be placed as an alternate on marine resources. Richard Davis, who is currently the chair of the planning board. Uh, Mr. Davis has been on the planning board for some time, and, uh, he is, he is also, his life has become busy, and he does not have time to continue on, so he's asking to, or he's not, he's asking not to be reappointed. Other notes about the current list of committees is that the selectmen have discussed in the past about a library committee and a comprehensive plan committee. I've had some interest from the public about both of these committees. Uh, and those will be on first meeting in July, I think it is, we planned on having that as a agenda item on appointing people to those committees. There were some suggestions from one of the selectmen, Kathleen, about advertising these committees on the website for at least a two-week cycle to see if we could get some other interest from town.
That's, like, that's a good idea.
So, if you guys are open to that, I'll, I'll probably ask the town clerk to post vacancies on these committees tomorrow on the website. So... And then if we leave them posted up until, I think our next meeting is July ninth, so, I mean, if we leave them posted till the Friday before the meeting, that should give us time to...
And really, my thought process is that all these positions are a huge learning curve. So, the more people we can get in here to learn the different things, maybe the better the town will be set up, because I would know that it's expected to be that, just much of a learning curve. So, you guys are patient with me, and wonderful, and I appreciate that. But I'm just thinking, the more people we can get interested in, and narrow that curve, that we're off to a lot of these.
Yes.
Do we need to do anything about the recently established energy committee?
The...
They upped the lighting and heating.
We do, do we have appointment papers for the Carlyle? I can't remember.
They've been...
They are all appointed, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, that's okay. All right, so what else do we need to do here?
So, in reference to this item, unless the board had some other changes they wish to see with the committees and so forth, I believe that we're satisfied for this year. So, that's your update on what you have currently for committees. I don't have any further, I don't think we needed any further on that item.
Okay. So, do we, this is all Peter. Yes, David?
I have a question on the Alwais committee. Is anyone able, able to contact John? Davis?
The last I spoke to Mr. Davis, I did not specifically ask him about the Alwais committee, but he had not indicated a lot of interest in other positions such as the, for the voting and so, energy committee and so forth.
Well, I've tried several occasions the last three years to contact him, through email and phone, and have, have no contact, he's made no meetings in the three towns. I assume he's lost interest, but I can't find out, so...
I would assume so, I mean, we have, I know Carlyle has made efforts to reach out to him again.
So, the Alwais committee should be listed on the potential vacancy.
And that's a, one vacancy right now.
On the help wanted page. And the other good thing about posting, if he sees it, maybe he'll get a...
Maybe I'll get a second.
Yeah.
And, um, possibly on the Facebook page as well, yeah.
And maybe a newspaper?
Too expensive.
Well, but maybe in the community calendar section or newspapers?
Yeah, I think, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, Madeline. You be careful, 'cause you're gonna end up on me.
She already is.
I am, I see you move right in here. I do think you read a different stance for the newspaper.
Yes.
And I think that that's a valuable...
Yeah, if we can, if we can get, like, a community thing, something for free, to run a, like, a block ad or even a legal advertising, it costs us over a hundred bucks.
Do a press release, get front page. A hundred bucks? I'm sorry, did you say a hundred dollars?
Over a hundred dollars, yeah.
For legal advertising. It might be well spent, honestly.
Yes, 'cause, you know, the other thing I would say to add, and we've got some really talented, knowledgeable people in this town, and to pull them in and be able to, to pull from that knowledge and talent would be a great thing.
It might be well worth, I, I propose...
You could take out your...
Yeah, you got, we didn't think about this a month ago.
Taking out your, your phone?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd reach out to Alwais before.
We can put the, uh, potential expenditure for advertising on the next agenda.
Yeah.
I'll take it from the budget advisory committee's budget, right?
That would.
All right, um, have we finished discussing our appointments? Are there other things that, that we've forgotten about? If so, remind me, if not, um... Do, uh, the library committee and the comprehensive plan committee, are we appointing them tonight?
I think the plan was to allow that to be advertised like we just discussed in the first meeting in July, your appointments.
So, now, Peter, is this your turn?
Business item number three.
Business item number three.
Okay. These are, for all intents and purposes, just re-signups, right?
These are the annual re-appointments, yeah?
Yes, okay. And if it's agreeable, the board of selectmen is asked to make the following appointments. On the staff, uh, the constables, town constables, Ellis Reed, Ron Beal, Joe Valancourt, Doug Alexander, Adam Garland, Jonathan Bean, and Todd Stead. And, uh, the codes enforcement officer slash plumbing inspector, plumbing spel... Ellis Reed. Um, deputy local plumbing inspector is, is Lee Rainey, who's the plumbing inspector down at this borough, and Ellis is vice versa. Uh, assessing agent D nine one one, addressing officer Ron Beal, animal control officer Todd Stead, fire chief and emergency management director Jonathan Bean, deputy fire chief Nicholas Randall, harbor master Joe Valancourt, assistant harbor master Doug Alexander, public access officer Adam Garland, road commissioner Steve Reno, shelfish warden Doug Alexander, and deputy warden now, uh, Adam Garland, health officer Benjamin Hubler, tax collector treasurer Julia House, town clerk Charlie Perry. And, uh, that's the personnel. The committees themselves, on the budget advisory committee, Justin Hennessy is up. On the economic development corporation, um, Ron Beal, Paul Coombs, David Hennessy, Leslie Kales, Steve Kales, and Bob Weir. And marine resources board, Pat Paul Madiozian, Tim Davis, and Angela Bryant as an alternate. And on the planning board, um, appointed new member Keith Perry. And, um, papers are making their way around that. Do I hear a motion to, uh, appoint these people?
You motioned it, what's it?
You just motioned it.
All right, then do I hear a second?
A second. All those in favor?
Those folks are re-up or point?
Madeline, may I make a comment?
Yes.
So, just a, a note, uh, Mr. Randall, being the deputy chief of the fire firm, that is a recent promotion, so I just want to congratulate Nick Randall for his promotion of deputy chief. It's a great achievement that he's accomplished.
Very nice. Well, we've signed papers, have we? So, we can write all the names?
I cut most of the letters out of my name.
Should I have a go?
It was awful, the kind that I would have to let him spell my name.
He just was PO.
Sorry to the people on, uh, yeah, watching the video, fast forward to the next item.
This is reality TV, it's fine as though.
While they're signing, I will remind everyone, the town office is closing at noon on Friday morning, end of the fiscal year for west bath town new year.
Yes, that should be broadcast somewhere, just to, for all of us who wait for the last day to register our cars.
Who would do that?
Wait for my social security check before I can pay my excise tax.
Some people don't bother registering them at all.
Well, and then they get caught, it's much more expensive.
He never got caught.
Yes, I see several of them in the front yards there.
Hemolytic ship is deteriorating.
I know, I see them, you know, comparing the first and last increase on these.
I bet you can tell.
Is that it?
Now, did you guys put those back in order for Carlyle in the...
Sorry, Carl. We're estimate. All right. All right, are we going to read the, the entire fee schedule when we...
I mean, I recommend adopting as written if you so choose.
Because there are no changes.
Correct.
There are no changes in the fee schedule. Is there any discussion? Could I have a motion, please?
Um, I move to read up as written, um, existing fee schedule, um, for the, um, town hall, uh... Fee schedule. Town hall activities.
Yes, that's good. Let me figure out whether... So, we are, um, acting on a motion to adopt the fee schedule as printed, which is the same fee schedules we've had in the past. All those in favor? Any opposed? And, um, last, I, uh, my official agenda is for the end of year accounts. Um, Alan, you are the most up-to-date person on that.
Sure.
So, along with your packets that I provided to the selectmen with a, a quick overview memo, if you will, on the town account. So, there's, uh, three different things I'd like to touch on real quick, and I'll make this quick so nobody goes to sleep. Um, the first is account overages, the second is the carryforward wing farm account, and lastly is the tax abatements expenses. So, when it comes to the account overages, every year, the tax collector treasurer Julia House and I will sit down and go over as per review of the accounts, see what, if any, overages there are. This year, there were three overages, I'm happy to say they're all rather minimal. Uh, hydrants was over by three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. That was due to last year, we received a new bill from the bath water district that had gone up on the rates after town meeting. So, there wasn't a lot we could do to avoid that expense.
And, and we had contacted the city prior to and asked if there were going to be any increases so that we might anticipate in our budget, and they assured us that there would be.
And then there was.
But, considered as soon as possible.
Yes. So, for this year, that has been corrected, the current budget is the correct amount, and they have yet to reach out and say that it's gone up. Uh, the recycling committee is over by five hundred and one dollars and five cents. And what that is in reference to is that every year, the town partakes in the hazardous waste cleanup days. We do it with BAF and we do it with Brunswick. This is done twice a year. And for whatever reason, in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen fiscal year, we didn't get billed for it until after June thirtieth, so this year, we got hit with three bills. If you look at the, if you look at the finances from, you know, the sixteen, seventeen, you'll see that we had a surplus, and then this year, we have a deficit. So, just asking that we, uh, you know, so we have that issue there. With both of these, and the next one I should mention, it's administrator's recommendation that the selectmen take money from the unanticipated expense account to cover all of these. The last is the salt capital, i.e. the San Salt building project, is over by six hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. And this is, we had some unanticipated change orders that came through, drew to groundwork issues and so forth, that is, that are causing an overage. So, again, uh, asking, recommending the selectmen use the unanticipated expense account to cover that overage. So, those three are the only three accounts that are over that we need to discuss. So, those three are the only three accounts that are over that we need to discuss.
Okay, comments?
That's total of fourteen hundred dollars.
So that, yep, that's a, yep. So afterwards, if you look at the unanticipated expense account, it starts out with a six thousand dollar balance because we haven't spent anything from it this year. And that'll bring the final toll down to forty-four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-seven cents, which, if unused, falls to surplus, the general line, if you will. So, the board would have to make a motion to allow us to do that, please.
So moved.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So, the second part of this is the wing farm account. As you guys know, Wing Farm is recently sold, which is a wonderful thing. Champagne fell from the heavens, it was beautiful. Anyway, so Wing Farm is no longer ours. But we do have some associated expenses that will continue on into the future from the EPA and other things that are associated with the grant. What I am proposing is that over this last year, we had thirty, we had three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents worth of legal fees that were associated to Wing Farm. Those were all charged to the Wing Farm carryforward account. In an effort to allow us to have some funds available for Wing Farm in the future, should there be some other legal issues or permitting issues or any unanticipated items that come up, I am asking if the board would allow us to transfer these three legal bills from the Wing Farm carryforward account to the town's legal line for this year, which is not a carryforward account. So, after this transfer, the Wing Farm account would have a balance of four thousand dollars and, four thousand fifty-one dollars. And the legal account will have an ending balance of sixty-seven hundred dollars. So, if the board is open to that, I would ask that they make a motion and vote to allow us to do that.
I'll make that motion.
My second question? Any discussion? All those in favor?
And then lastly, just a comment of note. This year, the town had twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents in abatement expenses. As you guys know, these expenses are covered by the overlay. And our overlay was thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, just a point of reference when we are sitting down to do the commitment and the selectmen are considering what you want your overlay amounts to be and so forth. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
What was the big item in that?
I don't have a breakdown, David, I'm sorry.
Alan, did you happen to look back historically at what our abatement expenses have been in the past?
I don't have that with me tonight, no. I just wanted to make you guys aware of that about. But if you guys want to report on that, I can bring you to it next time.
No, I was just curious. It's not that important.
And that's all I had, folks. Thank you.
Do we have some other? I have been in correspondence with Eloise Vitelli, our senator, state senator, who's also on the, on the Marine Resources Committee for the state, concerning the dredging that's happening in the New Meadows River. There's been quite a bit of comment about that concern. So, I received a response from her today, basically saying that they have... The Commissioner, Deirdre Gilbert, Colonel Cornish, and she had met with Dan Deveraux, who had earlier expressed concerns. And they have discussed next steps, including researching regulations and laws in other states that have more traditional hard clam fisheries such as Rhode Island. They've also researched existing bans on hard clam dredging, dredging in Middle and Mahway Bay. I had asked how we could get such a, such a ban in the New Meadows. So, they researched that and found that those bans date back to the nineteen fifties, but there is no recorded justification for why they were originally implemented. She, she knows that we continue to work on this situation and will consider possible rulemaking for the November cycle if it seems like the best course of action. And I responded to that note urging further discussion with all parties concerned and that actual surveys of the bottom and perhaps information sessions similar to those done with aquaculture leases to be conducted before dredging is allowed within coastal town boundary so that all competing fisheries can be considered fairly going forward. There's been some reported damage to the bottom in, in the middle ground particularly, and that lobstering has been hurt in that lower end of the New Meadows, so. That, I just wanted people to be aware that the concern has been raised on behalf of the town. And I will check in from time to time to see what's happening in the November rulemaking.
Have we had a discussion with Brunswick to coordinate our concerns with them?
Not yet.
Now, Dan had a picture in the, in the paper. And it was clearly was not underwater. It was in an intertidal zone. That he said that the marks through there were, were marks from the dredge. So, do, do, do we have any opportunity to, to stop it in, in the intertidal zone?
Doug Alexander spoke to the dredger and has marked out the places between where he was and extreme low water. And he has made commitments not to be within that area again. If he is, please report him to Doug if you notice that he's within that.
They've been pretty much doing it above me, so I, you know, I, I'm going on what Dan had put to paper. You know, I can see them, but I can't see really what they're doing. I think they're going across the middle ground, but I don't know that.
Ask people to keep an eye on it and ask Doug and, and to call Doug if they notice violations. Because Doug is a law enforcement officer.
Is, is it correct that they cannot drag it across the middle ground?
They cannot drag on anything that is...
Exposed?
Exposed at any, at any time.
Even a super-low drainer?
The law now is to extreme low. So, that means to wherever it is on the lowest of the low tides. So, if he's there, call Doug.
Just for information, what did they dredge in?
For co-hawks. Some people call them hard-shelled clams. I don't know why.
Yeah, okay.
They all look the same.
You know, if they were dredging to make a deeper channel.
No, they, sorry, I...
Oh, see, I didn't know.
I had no idea what was going on.
Yeah, dragging.
Dragging, not dredging. Okay, thank you.
So, dragging is authorized then?
Yes. The person who's doing the dragging is doing, does have licensing from the, from DMR. Is there other concerns? The next meeting of the board will be July ninth at five thirty, right here. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Tickets on sale in the morning?
Tickets on sale in the morning, yes. See Carlyle Perry. I have a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All those in favor? There's no one opposed.
No one opposed?